I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to the March fifteenth meeting of Lawrence County Commissioners. Item number two on our agenda, I hope you all have had an opportunity to pick up the agenda. Item number two is approval of the minutes for the March first meeting, move to approve. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three is approval of claims.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Item number four, approval of payroll, move for approval. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under appointments, first on the list is Scott Johnson, Radius Black River Military Coalition, Mark Dawes. Would you like to come over?
Yes, good morning Commissioners, thank you for giving me an opportunity to come speak to you this morning about the Navy Community Partnership Program. The Navy base at Crane is starting some programs now, we're trying to make awareness of opportunities for you to join us, primarily if you have a hand out there with you this morning. We have a goal, we're starting a new program to establish partnerships between the Navy and local municipalities, so we're kicking off a campaign to go around with five counties that are around Crane, to make you aware that we're trying to collect services, infrastructure, support those kind of things together, so that there's a community team that will come together and join as far as saving fund for these things. So, our purpose today is to design a dialogue that understands potential opportunities and partnerships between Crane, the Navy base, and the local community area. So, some of our benefits are to save money, so just to give you an idea, if you turn around the backside of that paper, you'll see that Crane does a lot of things that you do as a community, as a county, as a city, as far as buying roads, salt, asphalt, this kind of thing. So Crane's coming together as a community partnership, which is a new program, in essence to save money based upon economies of scale. So you'll be able to find, we talked through this very briefly this morning, that Crane is setting up some kind of arrangement now, so that you can enter into Crane, with Crane, and sometimes even at the state level to purchase items at bulk quantity. So, the intent here is to, some of the benefits that we're going to offer you is to increase and retain Navy spending in the local community, so primarily Crane, the Navy base, if you know anything about it, it's a very large area, a hundred square miles, over three thousand buildings, hundreds of miles of roads and railways, they have a lake, a marina, so they use a lot of similar services and support that you all do as a community. So, primarily what they're trying to do is gather all of these requirements from the local communities and put them all on the same kind of contract. So in essence, they would rather the funding stay here locally to our communities and to our counties than to send it off on a contract to somewhere else for the same support. So, it also enhances the quality of the support. So, larger quantities get you usually better prices and better products, it improves Navy community cooperation. So, I'm here this morning as a representative of the Black River Military Coordination Alliance, which is a new organization established with Radius here, to make sure that the communities are aware of what Crane's doing. So we have stated the community address that we just gave to Crane, so we're telling them about housing and bringing workforce here, and then Crane does the same. They give us a state of Crane, and they talk about all the facilities and all the things that they're doing on the Navy base. So, in essence, this organization's trying to get the community and Crane to talk together so that you're aware of what we're doing on the base. Right additional capacity for resources in some of these areas, these bulk buys that we're talking about, also want to improve the Navy and community relationships. So, again, some of you have been here for a long time, as I have, I'm retired from Crane, very familiar with it, but a lot of the people who are not, who don't know what goes on in Crane, and have no idea of the things that you hear, some of the things that they read about. So, we're trying to get the community more involved in what's going on in Crane, and you're going to see some more of that interest as the time goes on. So, what we have is we have proposed this morning, and we're going to briefly talk to you here just for a few minutes about, we're starting this campaign, it's primary time when we're talking about campaigns, so we're getting out on the road, and there are four of us that are out talking to the local communities around Crane. So there's five counties around Crane that actually touch the boundaries of Crane, that we're talking to them about similar things, about getting together for your requirements, for your facilities, your infrastructure, can we join forces, can we get on the same contract, can we buy in bulk, and those kind of things. So, primarily that's what we're doing, and we're starting the effort this week, and over the next two months, you're going to see us all out talking to the counties about just making contact, make you aware that there's a program now. In the past, it's difficult to do business with the federal government as far as contracts, as you probably are aware since working in government, having worked there for forty years, government, DOD contracting is very difficult. And so primarily this program is trying to cut through some of the red tape, so it's easier for us to work with the communities and keep the funding in the communities. So, we're starting this awareness, so that you're now aware of the program. There will be follow-up, if you look at that list that you have in front of you there, so if you look at point number two, we've identified an initial list of things that we think you might be interested in, that Crane uses, that use, a community uses well. So, if you look at that list and you take some interest in some of those things, and I believe that, I think the city of Bedford is already talking to Mark about pool, pool services, because Crane has a pool, they have a pool here in Lawrence County in Bedford, Indiana, so those are some of the things that they're looking at doing. So, they're going to be looking at that party list, we'd like to get your feedback. The community leadership, we want you to analyze this list over the next few weeks, and get back with myself or Mark, and I'll give you the points of contact with that, to let us know if there are any of those things on the second page that you're interested in. The community, we want the community in Crane to ask around and clarify questions, if you have any questions about those items that you see on there that are likely to turn this priority that might be of interest to you, to get back with us for your respective needs, and then we can work with the contracting vehicle that might be used to make that happen for you. So, primarily if you're on the back page there, if you're looking at some of those items, if you see something that is of interest, some of these are already being worked. I was talking to Stan just a moment ago, Crane's, they're already working with some of the other counties on things like road materials, bulk purchase of salt, chemicals, road chemicals, asphalt in small areas, some of the things, so there are a lot of air filters, you can just imagine how many air filters and light bolts and things we buy, they buy Crane for thousands of buildings, you know, why not get together the local communities and have a similar contract with large quantities, save some funding. Propane, that was another thing. So, these that are on the list are items that are already being worked, so the Crane's already working with some of the counties around the area on those. The pool, again, I mentioned because I know there was a discussion with Bedford about doing that. Retracting, if you look at that and you go, good grief, where did that come from? It's a need, it's a service that most of the communities use. Portable toilets, I know this is kind of funny to bring up here, there are a lot of them that get used across the counties and across Crane, why not get a similar contract, put those all together. Fire protection, we share fire protection, Crane usually supports some of the local communities with fire protection, vice versa as well. Emergency services, so there's some of those areas where I think that Crane can get together. There are several different types of contracted vehicles or agreements that we would want to put in place to support these, so if you have any interest in any of these items that are on this prioritizing list, this is your opportunity for us to talk about that and how we might be able to do that. So, I think that Mark at Crane, Mark Dawes at Crane is the person that is over this particular program, and if you have questions about those, he would have the specific details about the vehicle and how they would do it, he can answer any questions that you might have about the details of getting the proper agreement in place and moving forward with this. So again, keeping this very short to you, this is just an awareness for you as Commissioners of Lawrence County, Crane is working on this program, we want you to be involved in Crane, we want Crane to be involved in the community, we want to offer you the opportunity to potentially save money and increase services, so this is a good thing that Crane is sharing. Again, I've worked there for almost forty years, this is the first time I've seen this really reach out and go, we want the communities to work with Crane, try to get some of these services together, save money, keep the money in the local communities as well. So, with that, if you have any questions.
Unfortunately, we missed our appointment to your group back in January, but we've remedied that, and I would be the contact person for Commissioners too, so we look forward to be able to work with you.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, if you have any questions, I'll leave you my card as well, and you can get back to me, and I'll be sure that Mark gets the information about anything that you might have interested in there. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item under appointments is Brad Boo.
Thank you, Mr. Prusden. This is Chief Petty Officer Lou Mize, United States Navy, retired, some of you may know him, some of you may not. Lou came up with a great idea for a roundtable meeting, coffee with veterans, and of course, any veteran's family member that may need it. The idea takes place during my business hours, so I asked Lou to explain it to you, because it will be your decision whether or not I can go and do this during office hours, I would be outside the courthouse to assist the veterans that are coming to this program. It's a program that is tobacco-free and alcohol-free, so we don't have to worry about folks that don't like smoking, don't like drinking, to come to this meeting, because it'll be at the first, or excuse me, the Free Methodist Church, is that right Lou?
Correct.
Without further ado, I'm going to let Chief Mize come up and explain to you the program.
Morning.
Good morning.
Of course, he told me about five minutes ago that I was supposed to do this, and I didn't bring enough copies, this is going to be a flyer.
Look at you.
It's kind of self-explanatory, we just want to meet on one Tuesday a month, and it's going to be at the Free Methodist Church, they allow us their space. My wife and I will provide the goodies and coffee, and Brad suggested, just I think yesterday or the day before, that he has about ten widows that might be interested, or we could help them as a group as well. So, we're going to leave that up to the first group to show, and we're not even sure, you know, I haven't put out any flyers, I'm going to do that after today, but I can say it's going to cost the county nothing, no space, no utilities, no food, no money.
Well, Lou and I have been friends for a long time, so I very much appreciate his willingness, and for anybody who's ever appreciated his wife's cooking, whatever she provides would be great, so.
Yeah, you can tell.
So, approval for our Veterans' Fairground Officer to attend this during office hours, I think officially we need a motion and a second. So, move, we have a motion, second. Second. All those in further discussion, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
So, that is approved. Lou, thank you very much.
Hi, thank you.
Yes.
I just add, what Lou's talking about is unfortunately, since February twenty eighth, I've had to assist, or schedule assistance for ten separate widows. It's been really tragic, two weeks in the office. Also, thank you Commissioners for allowing me to attend this, and since it's on a Tuesday, my assistant service officer, Marine four Bedford, Pastor Bob Corson, will be in the office during those time periods. So I really do appreciate this. Also, before I leave the podium, I want to talk about the POW MIA mark, mark and monument out here. What for Chief Mize and Rodney Fish, that wouldn't exist. So, anybody that wants to go out there and take a look at it afterwards, if the Prince would like to hear the backstory of that, I'm sure Rodney and Chief Mize would be happy to give it, but it's a wonderful addition to our courthouse, and thank you again for spearheading that, Commissioners. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Will you have a copy?
Okay.
Okay, moving, next item on the agenda is Rich Kamal.
Good morning. I'm the Director of the Lawrence County CASA Program, Court Department Special Advocates. I am here to give you guys information on two grants that we are going to apply for. Under Indiana law, every child who's involved, a child in the needle services case is supposed to have a CASA advocate appointed to them. Most of our advocates and most of our children are served by volunteers. Unfortunately, we do have a waitlist of kids because in Lawrence County, I would say over the past year or two, the average number of kids in the system is somewhere between a hundred fifty and two hundred, so it's hard to get enough volunteers to serve all their children. So both of these grants are aimed at working on that backlist and getting services to those kids. So the first one listed here is a VOCA grant, it's the Victim of Crime Act Grant, it's distributed by the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. We currently have a VOCA grant right now, so this is a continuation of that grant. That grant currently pays for three full-time staff members for my office. Again, it costs the county nothing, it covers all the expenses for them, so it's just asking for a continuation of that to keep those staff members, and those staff members serve some of the children themselves, but then they also help support and supervise the volunteers on the other cases. The second grant is a new grant, the Wellness Project Grant, that's from the State of Indiana, State CASA Office. We already get two grants from them, one's from the matching grant, one's from the capacity building grant that we've gotten since I've been here, and I think they've gone for a while, but this is a new grant that they're putting in place. They call it the Wellness Project, because they have a, they've implemented a new wellness assessment where whenever a kid comes into the system, it's kind of a thirty-question questionnaire to kind of determine the level of need and the complexity of the case for the child. So this is to hire a staff person, so the ones that are low priority, they don't need as intensive, and it's not as time-consuming, so that somebody who is still checking in with the kids that are on the like low priority list, so they're not just being left on the waitlist. And again, that grant would pay for all the expenses of that. The Wellness Grant, I believe the amount I requested is like thirty-five thousand. The VOCA Grant, because the VOCA Grant is a two-year grant, and so I think, I haven't completely finished the numbers, but I think the budget for that, that we're going to be requesting is just a little bit over three-hundred thousand.
I think we need a motion to prove the acceptance of those grants, is that correct?
Not until they're ready to be signed. Do you want, do you have something you want to sign?
One of them, what particular party do they need to be signed?
I don't know the nature of this particular, these particular grants. Historically, the Commissioners, especially like with probation grants and all of those things, they want the Commissioners to sign off on them. If you don't need their signature, then move to approve.
I don't believe we do, I mean, I filed for the VOCA Grant last time without, without the signatures.
Okay, then I'll move for approve. We have a motion.
And a second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You guys heard me.
Sorry for the confusion.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I was expecting that. Next item on the agenda is Sarah Turpin from the Limestone Heritage Festival. Good morning.
Good morning. I am here today on behalf of the Bedford Revitalization, Board of Directors, to request permission to use the courthouse grounds. We are having our Limestone Heritage Festival on the last weekend in June, which we would be requesting permission to use the west side of the courthouse grounds beginning Thursday, June twenty-third, around four P.M., and then that would continue through Sunday, June twenty-sixth, through one P.M. to allow us time for cleanup. Part of Bedford Revitalization, Inc. is the Bedford Farmers Market, which traditionally utilizes the west side of the courthouse during that time, and we have an agreement with the Bedford Farmers Market that they typically will move to the east side of the courthouse on that particular Saturday to allow us to have the, you know, the space for the setup for our food trucks and food vendors.
We don't, we've done this before, so we're, it's not the first time we've done this, so we approve that, but we have a motion to approve. We have a motion, would you like to have a second for discussion? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is Corey Allen, Lawrence County Surveyor.
Good morning. I believe you have four proposals for a section corner perpetuation contract. Typically, just by the nature of these, they're, we're dealing with like five or six corners, I typically don't need to bring these forward, but Rachel Ozer approached me, she's working with Monroe County Surveyor, we're looking at being able to take care of twenty-seven corners in the northwest corner of the county. She's kind of coinciding that work, saving us a little bit of money, so we're looking at twelve thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five as our base bid. We always have additional depending on materials needed. Rachel's done another smaller project for us, she's worked in Monroe, Green, and Orange County on perpetuation projects, just does excellent work, and I'm happy to have her, I just need your approval also just because of the amount to do this. And basically, this would be replacing section corners, preparing documentation of that, a history of it. We've got one that's been replaced, this will be the fourth time, it's in a farming field, so we're hoping to put it deep enough it won't go anywhere again.
Well, when we first got this, I thought it was an I.T. but we understand.
It's kind of like bingo, A-one, B-two.
So this is above and beyond your normal budgeting.
I have to typically budget twenty-five thousand dollars a year for our perpetuation, but our contracts may be two thousand, five hundred, they're just random surveyors come in with working on three or four corners, and we came up with an estimate. We have a base price of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, they just find something, but our goal right now is to bring those up in the roads, and the corners just haven't been found in years.
Okay.
So, we've worked with several local contractors for several years now, it's worked well.
So I believe we need a motion to approve expenditure. We have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Brian Skilman, H.R. Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Trying to be brief here, but I'm here today to give my farewell address as County H.R. Director. I want to thank Commissioners Fish and Gapar, Commissioner McCracken, for their support and the creation of the Human Resources Department in twenty-seventeen. They took the necessary step in hiring an H.R. Director, which is absolutely necessary to operate in today's public sector, and I commend them for that. Also want to thank Commissioner Brandon for his support and involvement the last two years, I do appreciate that. Want to give a special thanks to former Auditor and current Treasurer, Jody Edwards, who works for and working hand-in-hand with me to improve county government and creating the H.R. Department. Also want to thank former Highway Superintendent David Holmes, current Superintendent Brandy Webb, and current Sheriff Mike Brandon for their support and time in the creation of the, implementation of the H.R. System, so I do appreciate their time and efforts and all of that. The Commissioners' support in creating and adopting a new employee handbook in twenty-nineteen, and supporting the H.R. System were crucial steps towards positive change. I hope this system will eventually be embraced by all county departments to grow and be an asset for the county for decades to come, all the time and money that we put into it, so I hope that will keep going. My goal here was to improve the culture, compliance, and efficiency of county government. I think the Commissioners and I have made progress in doing that, but there's still a lot of work to do, and communication needs to improve between the departments, I will say that. I hope I have been a trusted resource the employees felt comfortable coming to with any problems or questions they had. H.R. is necessary by all the county government, as all counties our size have a dedicated H.R. Department currently. I ask all elected officials, department heads, and employees, please give respect to whoever the next person is to fill my position. Their task will not be an envious one, and they will need time to learn the county government. I wish everyone the best moving forward. I'll still be available to the Commissioners, new person, anybody that needs my services, you have my number, you know where I'm at, I'll still be around. I hope that transition is smooth and seamless, but I anticipate some, you know, a lot of work will be done there, so. Appreciate everybody's support, wish you all the best, and I'm out of here.
Thank you, Brian. We do appreciate you and the work you've done. I just want to state that by Brian offering his services after he's left, that speaks well to me of the quality of the employees that we've had. Same thing in the Highway Department, we've had people leave, and their objective, once they've left, is to help the county grow, and that's a great thing, it speaks well with our employees. Item number six, item consideration, I don't know if they have anything. Item number seven, Department reports. The Highway Department is continuing to patch, cut brush, do the regular maintenance items, we still have a few minor weather-related issues that we're dealing with. I think it was previous who stated that we're not, I don't think the asphalt planes have opened up yet, but as soon as they have, we'll be doing additional work on roads. And that's really all I have for the Highway Department. Emergency Management, Valerie is a presenter at a cybersecurity meeting that's going on right now, so she's not able to attend. So we'll move down to Sheriff Mike Brandon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have a copy of the annual jail report?
You need some reading materials?
Yep, thank you.
And.
Good morning, again. Start with the jail counts. This morning, we have a hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and thirteen males, twenty-six females, two convicted level-six felons, and eleven Department of Corrections holdings. We've shipped about twenty Department of Corrections holds over the last month or so, so they're finally starting to move people. The only other thing I really have today is the annual jail report, I usually try to get this to you by February, but having to jail a manager and learning the job, it took him a little more time to get this put together this year than normal. This just highlights some of the issues that we have with the jail, some statistics as far as the number of arrests, hook-ins, the average daily population, some of the programming we offer, and so on. So, feel free to get back with me if you have any questions about the jail report, and I'll be happy to answer them, or if you see something that maybe shouldn't be in there, or whatever. That's all I have today.
Questions?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, bud.
Item number eight, unfinished old business, David Smith has a report. Can you get me a second, David?
I do, Mr. President. As we discussed two weeks ago, the Indiana General Assembly was looking to amend legislation previously introduced by the Attorney General of Indiana last year, intervening in the opioid litigation, where cities, towns, counties, governmental entities participated in the class action cases against identified opioid manufacturers and distributors. Since the time that we spoke two weeks ago, Governor has signed legislation where the differences that existed between those political subdivisions, where we had already previously become involved in litigation by retaining private counsel in twenty-seventeen, and the differences that the Attorney General had endorsed by the General Assembly last year have been resolved. New legislation was passed, and a new, what we believe to be more equitable method of division of the proceeds from settlements as they come in, has been reached. As a result, our counsel at Cohen and Malott has asked that we pass a resolution, Resolution twenty-two-dash-oh- twenty-two-two-oh-one, to opt back into the opioid settlement. By doing this, the state's interests and those of us in the counties whose interests were similar but not identical will now be realigned, and as the class action settlements are approved by the federal district court overseeing the matter, payments will be made pursuant to a formula fixed by the statute in due course. So I'm going to give you four documents. First is a resolution which I'd ask that you consider and pass.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-two-two-oh-one? Move for approval of motion.
Second.
And second, further discussion, all those papers, six to five saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then, in conjunction with the resolution, there are three documents for Commissioner Fish as President of the Commissioners to sign certifying that this action was taken today so that we can return the same and notify the Attorney General in a timely manner of our exercise of the option to opt back into the settlement and to participate with the state as a group in further pursuit of the opioid litigation matters. Part of that includes a restructuring of the attorney fees. Previously, our counsel had us enter into an agreement where a third of the proceeds would be payable in attorney fees. The federal district court has restructured that to fifteen percent, and the opioid companies have created a fund where about seven percent of that money will be, of the fifteen percent will be payable by them, the county will only be responsible for eight percent out of our share in payment of attorney fees on in Malott.
Okay. I move to do what Dave said.
Yeah.
For it to look good in that. We have a motion.
Second.
Second.
It's easy.
You want to repeat all that?
Sure.
You don't want to hear that again?
All those papers, six to five saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
For those of you who didn't understand what we were doing, Dave will be available after you. I believe that completes our agenda for the day, and I want to mention to you that we have a, State Department Counsel are holding an exit session immediately following this meeting, so would ask that those who are not invited to that exit meeting probably need to exit. Exit this ring, so. We have a motion to adjourn.
For Lou.
So Lou, second.